At what age does your hearing start going?
What?
It would, oh.
I believe it depends on how many children you have.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, right. I always thought my parents had selective hearing.
I only did that.
Kathy's started having problems with hers 15 years ago, so 50s.
Hello, it's July 28th, 2021. We're at a Board of Education special meeting. Can I, oh, it's 7:00 PM. Can I please have the roll call?
Mr. Dobbins?
Here.
Mrs. Etter?
Here.
Mr. Naaman?
Here.
Mr. Souchacki?
Here.
Mrs. Schuker?
Here. Five present, zero absent. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in the actions of the Board may participate during the public comments portion of the meeting. Please identify yourself on the Board sign-in sheet. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available to review on our school district's website. Please silence your cell phone during the meeting. At this time, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please, at this time, have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Naaman?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Dobbins. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next up, comments from the public. Seeing no signatures on the list, we will move on to treasurer's business. It's all yours, Mr. Muccio.
Thank you, Mrs. Schuker. Just a couple items tonight. Item 4A, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W9's attached as found in attachment T1. And item 4B, motion to approve purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T2. Ask for those motions for approval tonight.
At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the treasurer's business consent agenda motions.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Dobbins?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Souchacki. Discussion?
Yeah, just wanted to point out a couple items. So item 4A, which are the new vendors that we're adding to the school district. We have seven in total, nothing with a materially high amount. The first one is Rocket Innovations for erasable notebooks for the elementary school. The second one is Don Johnston Incorporated for online reading services. Number three is National Student Clearinghouse for post-secondary tracking data. Number four is Breckenridge Kitchen Equipment and Design for kitchen equipment. Number five is AGI Pro Services for window washing. Number six is Waste Management Services for trash removal. And number seven is Schroder Plastering to fix the ceiling in the auditorium that we have. Close out that attention. And go to purchase orders over 5,000. Click on that one. We have nine as well. The first one is Logicalis. And Dave, are you able to touch base on that for a little bit? This is $9,937.
So basically, in this order, you'll see two sections for Logicalis. The one here is for $9,937.80. This is an upfront per-year warranty for the hardware of our core network. Based on by doing it right now for three years, we're saving about $835 for that. This requisition actually replaces one that was previously approved that were being on PU 21795. So we didn't spend that last year, we're gonna spend it this year, and that will get us out until 2024. The second one, which is on 10D, is basically consulting services for Logicalis to come in and upgrade our home system. We haven't upgraded it in three years. We're having some issues with it, getting functionality issues, and that's for a cost of $15,873. And then also, they changed the way they license, so it'll be PG160 year for that. So basically, those are the two requisitions I'm putting out for approval. The one is an agreement, so that's why it's coming later. We ordered that.
Do we have, is Logicalis currently providing the support services for our phones and these services?
Yes.
Okay.
They've been with us since I started here. They've been doing excellent work with our home system. We can't use them because it's been working. It's just time to actually go through and actually do a little upgrade to the system, keep it going. But just to let you know, 2024, our home system will be end of life, which basically means we need to make a decision whether or not we want to continue with another home system, go to some type of outsourced provider, or, you know, whatever we decide at that time that's supposed to run the district. This will be asserted until 2024.
Yeah, what is the life of the phone system? How old is it now?
So we installed this originally in 2017, so we're looking at six or seven years for the phone system, which is not bad.
No, that's about what everything is these days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The second one is B.C. Technologies Company for student and staff management. This is frontline, excuse me, this is final forms. Number three is Frontline Technologies, which is the absent management system. Number four is CDWG for Microsoft licensing. Number five is Stanley Security for alarm monitoring. Number six is Savas Learning for additional math resources for grades one through five. Number seven is Passantic Partners Lunch Cycle Menu Fees for the 21-22 school year. Number eight is the Spring Valley Conference Dues for the 2021-22 school year. And the last one is Schroder Plastering for the auditorium plaster repair and the ceiling that we have over there. Ask for those motions for approval.
I'm gonna call Stanley Security and tell them that we're not paying them if they can't pronounce the name of the school right. I got a call at 1:00 in the morning last night, and they never say Kaihaug correctly. They're out of Minnesota, and Jim Zerbal and I were joking about it today. So I got a 1:00 alarm call, and the woman was stunned when I said, "For the money we're paying, you could at least learn to pronounce the name of the school."
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next up, superintendent's business. Mr. Avenger, you're up.
Righty. Six, business employment certified staff 6A. Motion to approve salary schedule advancement of the following three staff members to reflect changes to the most recent chat collective bargaining agreement for 2021-22. Kyle Manfredoni is step three, Kelly Orlando step seven, Madison Smith step seven. B, motion to approve employment of Sheila Ogden as an English communications teacher at Kaiga Heights Schools on a one-year limited contract per the adopted salary schedule. Masters, step five, effective August 1st through June 30th. Seven, business employment classified staff. Motion to improve the employment of Brian Voight as a teacher assistant per the adopted salary schedule. Step two, one-year limited contract for 21-21 to school year. B, motion to approve the employment of Mark Chase as cafeteria worker effective 21-22 school year, four and a half hours per day per the adopted salary schedule, step one. C, motion to approve the employment of Ken Laconapelli as a cafeteria worker with 21-21 school year, four hours per day per the adopted salary schedule, step one. D, motion to approve, come on, motion to approve, motion to place Joe Blados mechanic tradesman one at six years of experience for the purpose of vacation accrual as outlined Article 22 of the Chase contract effective July 1, 2021, as recommended by the terms of employment on March 2, 2020. E, motion to approve the employment of Laura Conte as the elementary school monitor, lunch recess for the 21-22 school year per the adopted monitor wage schedule, step one, not to exceed four hours per day. Superintendent's business employment supplemental positions. A, motion to approve the employment of Beth Paddock and Lisa Meyer as extended learning summer school personnel on an as-needed basis for summer of 2021 per the stipends outlined in the extended learning plan for summer of 2021. B, motion to approve the employment of Roy Zagante as the fall faculty manager for 2021-22 school year contingent upon sufficient number of student athletes, sufficient funding, and successful completion of background checks. C, motion to approve the employment of Alexa Prokopius as a freshman volleyball coach for 2021-22 school year, contingent upon sufficient number of athletes, funding, and completion of BCI background checks. D, motion to approve the employment of Mary Schrader on a supplemental contract as marching band director, show choir director, jazz band director for 2021-22 school year, contingent upon sufficient number of students, sufficient funding, completion of BCI background checks. Superintendent's business, employment substitutes volunteers. A, motion to approve the employment of Christina Falluta as a long-term substitute primary elementary teacher per the adopted salary schedule, BA step one during the 2021 school year as assigned. B, motion to approve employment of Steve Harris as volunteer for the boys-girls golf for 21-22 school year. Business agreements, contracts, and memberships. A, motion to approve the tax agreement for 2021-22 with Tim O'Keefe to research students as listed on the SF14 and SF14H to ensure the educational services that each student is receiving are being billed to the appropriate school district. B, motion to approve the attached credit account reactivation agreement with Follett for the 2021-22 school year for the College Credit Plus students to purchase books at Cleveland State University. C, motion to authorize superintendent treasurer to Title III FY22 Limited English Professions LEP Federal Funds Consortium with the Educational Service Center Northeast Ohio. If the funding is less than $900, the entire amount will be kept to offset the cost of the consortium annual professional development series. The amount of the Title III FY22 funding is $681.04. D, motion to approve the attached agreement with Logicalis for the upgrade of the phone system software on two physical servers and four virtual servers. Plan, configure, and implement emergency responder services and yearly Cisco Flex phone system software licensing. E, motion to approve memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and Kaiga Heights Association of Support Employees Regarding Eligibility of a Chase Member to Permit a One-Time Waiving of the Requirement of 65 In-N-Service Hours to Move Darris Gibson from Custodian 3 to Tradesman 2 with all other requirements in place. And F, motion to approve the salary schedule for maintenance supervisor and make it part of the exempt employee's scheduled benefits and also place Jim Zerbal a maintenance supervisor at step seven for the 21-22 school year. I ask for those items for your approval.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's business consent agenda motions.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Naaman?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Etter. Discussion?
Okay, just quickly going through it. The Kyle, Kelly, and Madison, that was part of the negotiations with the removal of the step, the step on the base. Those were three people that were actually brought in as step one, so that was part of our negotiation process that those three employees would gain a step. Anybody that was brought in as a step other than step one was not affected by that. Sheila Ogden, we were unable to secure a family consumer science teacher, and the charge I, you saw several postings, social studies, English. I said, when I talked to Mike Janatosh, I said, "We want to hire the best teacher out there," because we have to have elective offerings. Sheila's gonna develop some communications offerings for us. She's done that in the past. She's moving here from Pennsylvania. We're still gonna spend the year trying to find a family consumer science teacher, but we, my, I think the comment I made to Mrs. Schuker during the general review is I wasn't gonna hire the wrong teacher to, just to fill a spot, someone that we didn't, we weren't comfortable with. So we'll continue to move forward with that, but we need to make sure that we have some elective offerings for our students to fill that void. Brian Voight, teacher assistant. Brian is the luxury that we've had, has been able to hire teacher assistants that are certified teachers. Brian is a certified teacher, has done student teaching, and has come into us and will be working in the elementary building. Mark Chase and Ken Laconapelli gonna help us out in the cafeteria, two alums. Joe Blados, when Joe was hired on, this doesn't change his salary at all. This, when we brought him in, where he would've come in at, he would've only come in at like five vacation days, and we kind of kept his vacation days similar to where he was previously. So this is not a salary adjustment, this is a vacation allotment adjustment. We didn't have that in writing, for whatever reason, we're putting that in writing here. Laura Conte, four hours as a lunch recess monitor. I know Joey's still looking for a few more of those. Beth Paddock and Lisa Meyer added to the summer extended learning list. Petey Zagante is faculty manager this fall for us. Alexa, to help coach the freshman volleyball team, they were down there working the other day. Mary Schrader, the supplemental contract for our band director, she's excited, she's been working, she's met with the band boosters, ready to get band camp up and running next week.
Question, is it Schrader or Schroder?
It's Schrader, because I would've pronounced that Schroder, and somebody corrected me the other day, so.
Okay, I just want to clarify, Schrader.
Yeah. Christina Falluta, long-term sub. We've got back-to-back employees that will be out from maternity leave in the elementary building this year, so Christina just moved back here from Maryland. Christina also has some counseling background, so we're gonna see if we can help, have her help us with some social-emotional activities in the elementary building, too. Excited about that one. Steve Harris, this might be the last thing that Steve hasn't done for us is golf. I think he's done almost every other sport. Tim O'Keefe, we know Tim's value to us as a district, just been incredible. That was a Joe Brigant, old friend of Joe Brigants', and Tim's stuck with us, and we're very happy that he has. The agreement with Follett, that's so, the C.C. College Credit Plus books with Cleveland State University that were mandated to purchase for them. Title III funding through the ESC, this just allows us to be a part of that consortium if we have a need for that proficient, the language, limited English proficient. And from my understanding, is, I think we just had a new move-in student that speaks no English whatsoever. His dad had him in my office two weeks ago, so he just came to us from the Middle East, and he did a lot of naddin', so we're gonna have to do some work with him. Logicalis, you see, they're the MOU with Chase. This is a one-time, Darris is our second shift custodian. Due to his work requirements, because he starts, he has to be here at work at 2:00, and he works till 10:00, he's not able to go to any in-services because the daytime in-services run till 4:00 in the evening. So he's met all the requirements to move to tradesman status, but he can't get the service hours other than some online stuff, which he's done to his extent, so this is a one-time waiver, so Darris can make that move for us. He was, part of that, he was a bus driver for us. Darris has been a really valuable employee for us. And the previous meeting, we brought the, my secretary's salary schedule on, this is the maintenance supervisor's salary schedule we looked at last year. This has proven it to be part of the exempt benefits package. We'll keep kind of chipping away at that and adding salary schedules to that as we go through that. So I ask for all, any questions on any of those items?
Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Continuation of superintendent's business.
Okay, approve employment of Anthony, how do you pronounce that last name?
Etter.
Etter, as an assistant cross-country coach for 2021-22 school year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We're happy to have Anthony on board. He was trying to get some schedules, some work things, make sure that he could make it happen. I think he's just really excited to get on board and contribute some, so.
Well, I know Coach Robinson will be very pleased.
He definitely will, yeah, for sure.
That's awesome. All right, roll call.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Epstein.
Mr. Souchacki?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero with one abst, right?
Four, zero, one.
I'm thinking four, and I said five. Four, motion passes four to zero with one abst, same vote. We're good, okay. Heck, it counts. Next up, board business resolutions.
Can I make a squeeze a few counts?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Oh, I'm sorry, I totally skipped over it.
No, no, that's right. And I just, and I'll try to keep it short. I've given you the, what we, the Ohio K-12 from the Ohio Department of Health, and obviously a hot topic on the news is ODH and CDC, and where are we at with masks? And that question's come to maybe some of you as board members through emails, I know some have come to me, and I previously put in town talks that masks were gonna be optional, that's the plan, and that's the plan that we're, that I intend to stay with at this point in time. We're gonna strongly recommend that students wear masks. There's some political infighting behind that. You're not, I doubt that you will see any organization in the state of Ohio mandate masks, because the legislation has given themselves the power to override a public health order either by the Ohio Department of Health or the governor. And I think they're kind of waiting for one of those two entities to mandate something so they can then override it. So you're gonna, we're gonna see strongly recommend, and that's the wording that we're gonna use as well, strongly recommend. We continue to have our protocols in place. We're gonna be back five days a week with our students. I'm gonna, I'll reprint town talks, and I'll add some of the other, and the big point that they're making here is it's about vaccinations. People need to get vaccinated. I looked at, I spent a good part of the day looking at local numbers versus state numbers versus national numbers. Actually, locally, we're ahead of national numbers here. The South is really where it's come, it's really lagging. I saw Hummer's Twitter post, somebody said in the state of Alabama was like the lowest, somebody, they said if Nick Saban said he's not gonna play a football game till everybody gets vaccinated, the state of Alabama would have 100% vaccination rate by the day after tomorrow. But, you know, urging those vaccinations, we still don't have one for students 11 and under. The thought was at the beginning of the summer that that would be out relatively quickly. I think that they're still working through some kinks with that, so we'll do whatever we can. We'll also make available to anybody 12 and up here onsite, again, that wants to do that, and any staff members. We, I did not keep a record of who. There's also some legislation out that will kick in in October about not segregating out people that have been vaccinated and haven't been, and making, having different stipulations for them, so that actually kicks in in October. But we're ready to go. We're gonna, we got our air purifiers going. We, we're talking about some of the ESSCR money. I'm gonna put a report in this town talks about how we're planning to spend some of it. We got a really good report. I was on a webinar with Matt and Gardner last week. We're gonna have enough ESSCR money to complete the seven rooms in the elementary building with air conditioning. The problem is it's not gonna be able to have until next summer, because everybody got ESSCR money, everybody's doing building renovations. I talked to them today, we're gonna try and get a contract in hand, we gotta get it approved through the state that we can use that ESSCR money, but there will be enough funds there. We will be able to finish off the, every classroom in the elementary building will be air-conditioned, and when that's completed, so I told them I was emphatic about that getting on the dock, and as soon as students leave the building next, next spring. So, and then we'll start working on the middle school wing over here. So we kind of restarted that process. I like the fact that the ESSR money's gonna give us a little jumpstart to that, that's good for us. I think that'll make a lot of elementary parents happy. That's what I have.
Sounds good. Sorry to skip that item.
No, no.
Thank you.
Because I wasn't sure what kind of questions you guys were getting about coming back. I know some of you have talked to some people casually, whatever, but, you know, and this is where the superintendent's in the area, I told a couple of board members, we're here a little bit early, I refresh my seven-county sheet like every hour, and I'm, I talked to Jim Lloyd from those that falls today, I'm meeting with Ben from Independence, Joel from Brexville, and Mike Lob from North Walton tomorrow to talk through some of the stuff. And so far, I obviously talked to Ted probably more than our wives talked to us, but we're on the same page moving forward with this. It's very frustrating for everybody, but we want, everybody wants kids back in building face-to-face, and let's get, let's get back and do what we do best.
Has there been anything about like athletics? I've not heard anything.
Well, yeah, actually, the OHSCA just came out, and all they did is reiterate what's in that packet. There's no, there's not gonna be any, there'll be no mandates from OHSCA, but they are recommending that with outdoor, indoor events, that if people are unvaccinated, please mask, but they're not putting, they're trying to, if it's a crowded event, try to space. If you're unvaccinated, they're asking that you automatically space. They're not talking about spacing, so we can take the spacing off the bleachers and go back to normal seating out there. So that, you know, there's no mandatory mask at events, there's not, there's not attendance limits, but they are asking people that are unvaccinated to self, either to mask and also social distance. So that will probably be the one announcement that we would have on during the game, that if you, if you're unvaccinated, we ask you to please make sure that you keep social distancing in mind and wear a mask.
Something, again, my brain's just thinking about like the back-to-school, you know, maybe something in that Tom talks to as you normally do, just taking your kid's temperature.
Yeah.
Is that a good idea?
Parent subject, and we're gonna, we're gonna go through that whole list of things for parents, and please, because there's no, we have the contact trace, but there's no quarantining now, because, because, so they, the county Department of Health wants to do all this contact tracing, but then they're not gonna quarantine anybody, because they changed those rules in the spring that if they mask, they can, they can be in school. Just if your child is ill, they can, and there's no 10 days, there's no five days, just keep them home till the symptoms have subsided. So that's, picks up where it left off, there were no changes to that. So I need to reiterate and get all that out. That's part of what this Saturday's coffee talk is gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over with people. It'll be in town talks on Friday, and then I'll, I'll spend some time on Saturday morning. I'll probably take a half hour, and I know that Mike's Janatosh is gonna talk for about a half an hour about middle school, high school coming back. And, and we're gonna, we're urging all of our, we're gonna do an admin retreat next week, but we're, we want all of our activities back up and running. So, you know, one of the first things we do is the pep rally. I want the elementary here, let's do it outside in the stadium when I'm doing the gym, let's get out in the open air, let's get, let's get back to doing what we do, let's get our clubs going again with the sign, Olympiad up and running. We still want to do an activity bus, we're gonna talk about making sure that happens, so teachers that want to keep kids after school for some additional tutoring and activities, we'll have transportation home. I know it's always been a big thing for the elementary parents and middle school parents, so we're, all those wheels are turning right now, and we'll hammer it all out next week.
One more question.
Fire.
Lunch. Are there gonna be any restrictions at the lunch table?
Great question. We just, we just had that discussion today, because, you know, we've been spread out all over, and I need to get Joey's gym back in the elementary building. What we think we're gonna do is we're gonna allow them to go back to their tables, but we're gonna ask them to stay at the same table every day. That way, if we have to contact trace, we know who was at what table, so they can, we can kind of re-condense them a little bit and not be spread out all over God's creation. But again, with lunch, weather's good, go out and sit in the stadium. We bought, we bought picnic tables for the elementary building, and let's get some outside in the open air, let's utilize the good weather in the fall while we have it here.
Awesome.
That's great.
That's a good idea.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Item 14, board business resolutions. Item A, resolve that the board hereby accepts the resignation of Treasurer CFO Matthew Muccio effective July 31, 2021. Item B, resolve that the board appoints Matthew Muccio as Treasurer CFO for the period beginning August 1, 2021, and ending on July 31, 2026, and authorizes and directs the board president and vice president to execute an employment contract with Mr. Muccio upon such terms and conditions as have been agreed upon by the board. So I'll take a motion to approve the board's business consent agenda motions.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Souchacki?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Naaman. Discussion, I wanted just to add some items. Give me one second to go to my handy-dandy notes. Oh, it didn't save. Hold on one second.
There's some notes in the body, though.
Where are the notes?
Notes in the body of the.
On the agenda of bullet points, is that what you're referring to?
The bullet points are there.
I made notes.
Oh, well, then, sorry.
But wait, you see them?
I see it in the body of the.
Oh, wait, it just turned yellow.
Yeah, that's.
It wasn't yellow originally. I swear, guys, I swear.
No, it happens, I've had that happen to me where I thought they went off to the note land, and some came back.
So just to clarify, and please, like, board members, help fill in any gaps that I'll probably be sure to leave, we just really, you know, got together as a board and recognized that we have a very quality leader in Mr. Muccio as our school treasurer, and we know that it's very important, you know, his, the work that he does, the way that he is aligned and his, and helps us achieve our goals, and we want to make sure that we're taking the steps to secure his employment here. And so what this allows us to do with accepting a resignation and then appointing him with a different contract, it allows us to compensate him in a way that's fair and competitive in relation to his peers. And so that's why we are doing it this way, because he's, he's currently, or prior to this vote, he would have been in a current contract, and what this is going to allow us to do is to like, or end that contract and start a new contract. Does anyone want to add anything?
Yeah, I sure do. I just want to say that it's been a real pleasure working with Mr. Muccio from almost, what are we, day one, and I recall just one, one kind of indicator of his character is, as I recall, he agreed to come to work for the district on some mid-wake, some midweek period, near the end of the school year, he refused to take any time off and wanted to start that following Monday. And his commitment to the district and to the needs of our district have been paramount, and just that one little snippet of his past performance is indicative of how he's been for the last four years? Four plus years? Yeah. I also want to say for the people that would look at this at a dollar and cents perspective that I'd invite you to contact Mr. Evans or Mr. Muccio and inquire about Mr. Muccio's compensation relative to his peers in Cogah County. I think that that would be a very informative and enlightening analysis if one so chose to undertake it. But the dollars and cents notwithstanding, I just want to thank Mr. Muccio for his teamwork, for his commitment to our district, and for his professionalism, and his competence and knowledge in the position. I trust the numbers that we have, and it's vitally important to be able to do that, so thank you.
Well said.
Extremely well said. I'm not even going to comment after that, I couldn't possibly add to that.
Okay, hearing none, more discussion, we'll call.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Yeah, I would just like to thank the board. I'm very grateful and thankful to be a member of the team here. It's a great team. I'm exceptionally lucky, so I can't articulate enough how happy I am to be a member of the team here, so I look forward to the future. Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, you've got five more years, at least.
Thank you. Next up, Board Discussion Comments. Mr. Naaman, you have anything?
I'll just, congratulations, Mr. Muccio, and welcome again for another five years. That's it.
Mrs. Edder?
Same thing, I mean, you know, Mr. Dobbins is always very eloquent when he speaks about these subjects, but I, without doubt, I think the confidence that we, as a district, the community, we have to have confidence in the financial stability of the district, and I think we have that from what we give from our treasurer and from our leadership here. So I do appreciate the work that Mr. Muccio does here for our, for our district.